Okay, six o'clock. Okay, it's six o'clock. This meeting is called to order. There is a quorum present. All we need is a majority of existing members of the council, and we do have that. So let's stand up and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for, and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for giving us a free will to either embrace or reject you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. Let us never be ashamed to say that we are dedicated followers of your commandments. Amen.
Okay. Vanessa, are there any citizen comments? None, none tonight? Okay, so let's move right ahead to the standard monthly reports. Will, go ahead and go with, let's just go right through them. The utility operations, animal control and patrol report, and building committee report. Just tell us when you're moving on from one to the other.
Okay. First up is the utility department. They've been busy through, or they were busy throughout April with several leaks and with constructing the cart barn addition, which is part of our community center project, which is being primarily done in-house. But we'll cover that when we get to that part, too. We did have water consumption over the last month. April showed fifteen thousand gallons for average consumption with a total of fifty-one million gallons sold, which is up from last, the previous month of March twenty-five, where we were just shy of nine thousand gallons sold and nine point five million gallons sold. This is not to be unexpected because the waters or the temperatures heating up, which means people need to water more, including our good old golf course. It is considerably more, about a third more in the year prior, which is something I'm gonna dig into to see how we explain why we're up by about thirty percent from previous year. Or, report. Sorry to people online, I did have those water figures for water sales included as well. I'll give you just a moment to look at those. The video will be available after on YouTube if you want to review it, though, or of course you can get any of these documents applied to you here at City Hall just by asking. Here's our ordinance report. This is our chief, or our ordinance officer who goes out and gives these citations to people. We have been getting a little bit of feedback from some community members who got citations and they're, they're not happy about it, but they're gonna come into compliance. There've been quite a few verbal warnings and door hangers, particularly for grass, limbs, and debris. We've also been going after parked cars, had complaint-driven ordinance citations are our main tool right now. So if you see someone that is breaking the rules and you wanna have our friendly officer stop by, just give us a call. Going on to animal control. Mr. Mason was busy in April. He said snakes are coming out. He had a confrontation with a rattlesnake. Raccoons in trees is something that he's keenly aware of because they're not supposed to be out during the daytime. In a tree, call our animal control officer and he'll try to take care of it. He's also had a couple of dogs that he housed rather than sending them to a shelter until their owner could come get them or he could take them back to him. For patrol activity, I didn't put this whole document up on the screen because it'd be too small to see. But Deputy Chofy has been busy this last month. He is going after stop sign runners, speeders. This coming month, I hope to have our radar signs up and working. We have some that are, they need to get fired back up and put them out there to let people be aware of when they're speeding a little bit more, obviously. And Deputy Chofy let me know that he'll do his best to get anybody who's speeding. A report of a red pickup truck going down the road and, you know, he heads over there and they're, they're long gone by the time he gets there, but he's trying to be proactive about it. Going on to the building committee report. Not a ton of activity. We had two new construction permits issued. One at three one four Mahan and one at four two two St. Andrews. And then in progress, we have three spyglass on Broadmore and on Preston Trail. All right, and that includes those various committees and activity reports.
Any questions on that and any of the reports? Will just brush through. Let's move on to golf to do it for David.
Yes.
The golf report. Go ahead.
I was just showing it to you. I printed off his golf report because David is still out on medical leave most of the time. That's our pro shop manager. However, he is coming in whenever he can. He said that in terms of the golf course, the greens have been aerated and fertilized. He wants to give a special thank you to his staff, especially Isaiah, for stepping up and manning the boat while the captain's out at sea. He said that of the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five, total revenue that he has is five hundred and six thousand. Green fees account for one hundred and seventy-one thousand. Cart fees are sixty-two. Comparing that with last year where total revenue was five hundred and sixteen thousand, accounted for a hundred and sixty-six. So we're pretty close to last year and the previous year was five hundred and five thousand, which is just one thousand dollars off from where we are. So we're on track there, even with a little bit of interruption from some construction. Any questions about the golf course right now before we move on?
Yeah, I, I was gonna say one thing. If you could get David to get, I know he's not here so very often, so, but if we could get the numbers before so we can be looking at them as you're reading it because it's, I, I'm better at reading than I am at listening.
Sure thing.
Okay.
All right, that's all for that.
Okay, that's all for that. There's the two consent items. I'll, I'll go through the first one, the minutes, and then we'll do the financial reports.
They do have one thing on the minute.
You do have one thing on the minute. Okay, everyone does have a couple of the minutes and let's, let's, if you have additions or corrections, just go ahead and raise your hand.
I put in one addition that is in there to match the requirement from our bank for signatories on financial accounts. And that is in the minutes, number five consent items. It's actually to reflect the March meeting, so not our last meeting. It just says that at the March meeting, Meadow Lake City Council authorized the removal of Kevin Bauer as a signatory for all accounts. Add to Vanessa Solotano as an authorized signatory for all accounts while keeping John Thompson, William Rose, and Kevin Colley as signatories for all accounts. That's right, page thirteen in the packet. And that's just, they need that exact wording, even though we had something similar.
And this is, this is, we're looking at it now, but the correct wording?
Yep, this is the correct wording as they gave it to us.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, sounds good. Well, as amended then, well, let's, let's wait, we'll do it, we'll do the consent items as one after Will does, goes through the financials. If we could. Go ahead, Will.
Financials, we have slides to look at. We're gonna go through it first with just overview of each fund, revenue, finance, or revenue, expenses, the profit loss, and first up is our general fund. We were budgeted this month, or last month, to have an income of fifty thousand seven hundred dollars. And we were a little bit short at thirty-three thousand two hundred. As you know, the general fund revenue comes in a little sporadically sometimes and is primarily funded through antiform taxes. Comparing that with expenses, our expenses were two thousand dollars under where we came in, or where we projected, which is that we're not overspending. That's one thing we can control pretty easily most of the time. One thing to note with these numbers here, too, it gives our, our operating budget, so this doesn't include any of the transfers between our, but we will talk about those briefly later so you're aware of them. The net, would you put the expenses, you have a slide for expenses?
There you go.
Yep, there are expenses for the general fund. And we can go on to our, I'll catch up now in a second, I hope. There we go.
Gain-loss for our general fund. So you can see we are actually about fifteen thousand dollars ahead from our projected amount of net loss for this, this fiscal year and the general fund so far. And then cash flow, we're about where we expected to be, where we hope to be. There's our cash flow. That starts with our cash on hand and we put in our revenues and expenses to see where we're at in total cash on hand throughout the year. Going on to our recreation fund. Here you can see that we're ahead of the game on our budgeted revenues, which is always good to see. Our expenses are down. We were anticipating or projecting seventy-eight thousand dollars of expenses and in April, we, I apologize, they're above what we wanted them to be. They are, we anticipated seventy-eight thousand, we're at eighty-five.
Or is that what?
That's page twenty.
Twenty, okay. Okay.
And then we are one thousand dollars or a little, little under two thousand dollars behind where we projected our profit and loss to be. We have a profit of twelve thousand dollars this month, last month, and we're anticipating thirteen thousand. And then for cash flow, this was the last thing I was talking about, sorry about that, cash flow, we are better off than where we anticipated. All right, good to go on to utilities.
Cash flow is revenue minus expenses, I see.
Yeah, for the starting point of what we had in the bank at the beginning of the year.
Revenue for utilities, budgeted one hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, brought in one hundred and forty. Utilities expenses, higher than anticipated, a hundred and twenty spent of a hundred and seven thousand projected.
Why is that different? Seventeen thousand dollars more, you know why?
I believe that a lot of that comes from equipment purchases in recent updates.
Utilities wouldn't have purchases, wouldn't.
Yes, it does.
Equipment purchases, possibly.
I might note that if year-to-date, if you add up January to April, the utility expenses total nine hundred and fourteen thousand two sixty-seven. And if you add up the actual, it's nine hundred and fourteen thousand and eighty-nine. So it's only a couple of hundred dollars difference.
Okay.
So.
Between budget and actual.
Between budget and actual.
Yeah. Well, good. Thanks for doing that. I planned on doing it, I didn't do it.
Didn't get an answer. Didn't get an answer.
Oh, I believe.
Why, why were they higher?
I believe that, so in planning out the budget, it's kinda, it, and then broken in twelve parts. We might make purchases throughout the year that aren't perfectly split up into twelve divisions. So I think that that kinda explains why it would be off by thirteen thousand dollars from the projected month.
Well, you know, when you go through and look at it, like last, for March, we had budgeted more and spent less in March. So I think it's just probably the way they're coming in.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
All right. Cash flow is coming in, utilities. And here's our assets versus liability. You can see that in assets, we have a total sitting in the bank account of nine million nine hundred thousand. When you put together total liabilities and equities with all accounts, we have fourteen million eight hundred thousand dollars on hand, eight hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars on hand. I mean, that about half of our cash on hand is in the capital improvements fund that's specifically for our civic center, our community center. Meaning that about half of our cash on hand is in the capital improvements fund that's specifically for our civic center, our community center.
Can you all hear me?
I'll try to speak up.
I can hear you.
Here's our capital fund. You can see the interest earned since the beginning of this fiscal year up in the top right corner is two hundred and seven thousand dollars. Then when you minus any expenses we've had throughout the lifetime of this project, right now we're sitting at seven point five million dollars, or seven, seven million five hundred eighty-two thousand dollars.
I have a question. Is the pool construction cost expenses, that with the engagement of a pool designer, that's where, so we, that's what that is for?
That's right.
Okay.
It's a lot of that, it's, so I'll test in a lot of that stuff.
Okay, yeah.
Right, and here's our general fund snapshot. So you can just see where accounts are coming and going. Over on the far right at a percent of our month-to-date, so we're at a hundred on those revenues. It means that we're bringing in more than we're anticipating to bring in at this point in the year. We're above a hundred on the operating expenses. It's the same, but it's a bad thing. It means we've spent more than we anticipated at this point in the year. Going through it, you can see that the revenues in total, including transfers for the Meadow Lakes General Fund are fifty-one thousand dollars. So that's different from the thirty and change previously. That's with the addition of, I think it's seventeen. Nine, one, seven. Transferred from the utilities over to the general fund. Cash on hand is one million eighty-eight thousand dollars. Net income this month, or rather I guess to say this, last month was twelve thousand dollars negative. The net gain on the year right now is two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. So we are, we're up overall on our general fund.
About seven percent.
Alright, moving on to the recreation fund. Revenues with any transfers is ninety-seven thousand dollars. Expenses are eighty-five thousand, meaning that we're twelve thousand profit or gain in the last month. On page thirty-one, which I'm going to go ahead and go to the next that's off, we have the second. Where you can see the net gain for this month is twelve thousand dollars. I'm sorry, the net revenues are twelve thousand dollars and the expenses are thirteen thousand. However, on the year as a whole, it is not as bright as the general fund. We are five thousand dollars gain. I guess comparatively to where we thought we might be, about forty-six thousand dollars in the whole. That's looking pretty good. I commend our recreation staff for doing their best and not overspending and-
So does this include any transfer in from the general fund? The numbers that we're looking at here, I don't see it, but I'm not-
There's a transfer from the utility fund, right?
Transfer, where, which line is that?
It was, I think on some of the other slides, it shows the transfer.
Yeah, but the numbers we're looking at here, they generated this minus thirty-six, thirty-six.
So, on page thirty, in the non-operating income, transfers in from other funds, there is a twenty-five thousand dollar this year. However, in the last month, no money was transferred over.
And we had a lot more transfer in than that. I think it was like for the budget for the remainder of the year, there's over a hundred thousand or so?
That would be from, if, I know what you're talking about, utilities to the general fund. That's seventeen thousand and change per month. It comes in over a hundred.
But there's also some to the rec fund though, too.
I think so.
Okay, I don't, I don't remember the number though offhand. It's been
It's fifty thousand divided
Okay. Okay, so it's fifty thousand for the year?
Right.
Okay, so we only show twenty-five and we're more than halfway through the year.
So I can't remember exactly how many months we transferred on.
That's okay. But, but I'm assuming that twenty-five thousand transfer in is the correct number. So that represents only half of what we will transfer in. And we're what?
So I think we got June.
We got five months left.
June, September.
Yeah. Okay. Good. It's not as bad as the numbers here look because we still have some coming in.
Alright. This is kind of across the board for general utility recreation funds. So you can break down where the main operating revenues and expenses come from. So here you can see the total operating revenues from October of last year to this year are two million twenty-three thousand dollars. We have some non-operating revenues, which are usually transfers in from other funds. We'll go on to our expenses next. Just kind of overview of the funds again. Total operating expenses so far have been one point seven million dollars, meaning that in terms of operating expenses and revenues were positive three hundred and ten thousand dollars. And with non-operating expenses, we're still positive one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars.
Can we use, excuse me, can we use any over revenue for the community center?
Potentially, yes.
Look, I'm sure we're gonna need to.
Yeah, plus we made, according to the report earlier, earlier here, we made two hundred thousand dollars or two hundred and seven thousand off of interest on those bonds.
Oh, I saw that.
Yeah, yes, yeah. I figured you'd look to zero in on that one.
Well, Mayor, on page thirty-five, that's where they show the utility fund, the hundred and seven thousand five hundred that's transferred out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It just says transfer out to other funds, but
Don't know which-
I think they, I don't think you can go directly from utility to rec because utility is not, is not something you can put on recreation. You've gotta go to, you've gotta park it in general and then you can move it from general to recreation.
Alright, any other questions with the budget report for this month? Alright, thank you. Alright.
So we need to accept it.
Okay, you wanna make a motion to accept both of the-
I move we accept both the monthly, the minutes from our prior, from our April meeting, the April twenty-twenty-five financial statements.
Amended minutes, right?
Amended, yes, all changed. Accept the amended minutes of our April twenty-twenty-five meeting and the April twenty-twenty-five financial statements.
Okay, all in favor? Three to nothing. Okay, thank you. I'm gonna move up the swearing-in right to, we'll have Barbara on the team with us. Bruce, as I see, has already got some spots picked out here, so let's, let's go ahead and do that. Vanessa, will you lead the way? I think Barbara, you, Barbara need to be sworn in too. Yeah. Now let's move back to old business. I think we got that, got that taken care of and we got four members here. And that means I'm about to break ties, so. Okay, go ahead and talk to us about the waste, this is vital wastewater treatment plant update, I assume.
Yep, barring any unforeseen events with our grant manager who is doing a very good job. We've submitted all of our paperwork to our grant manager. We've spent all funds. So we've spent all of our SLFRF funds and this will probably not be on the agenda going forward.
Okay, and the community center update?
Alright, and we met yesterday with, sorry, I'm trying to get this go-forward. Our architects in, if you want to talk at all, feel free. But the main takeaway, even though I had to leave a little early for it, was that it looks like we are very close to being within budget.
Yes, but Will, David will give us the final numbers. We're gonna get the final drawings about the second week of June is what we're expecting now. And they, they gave us the drawings and we made changes a little bit, basically with the construction fencing to make it they, the way they had the construction fencing to the tennis courts, and I asked, how do I get from number nine to one? And that wasn't easy. So they said, no problem. So they're moving the construction fencing. If you'll look on the, on the right-hand side over there, you see how close the, that LOD is the construction fencing? And it's right at the edge of the tennis court, which means they have no way to get in and we have no way to get there around to the, but so they're gonna do that. And they're also thinking about the construction fencing, instead of having to put temporary poles. You see, the patio that we have that is, you know, behind the they're going to move that construction fencing out and use the existing metal poles to do construction fencing, meaning we'll have use of that whole patio.
Oh, good.
And that, and so that was one of the things. And then the other thing we, we spoke about was they were looking at, you know, they want us to go back and check all the outlets to make sure we have enough outside outlets. And, and they were making changes, some of the electricals and also discussion of the restrooms in the, for the pool are not air-conditioned or heated. And so they were wanting to make sure they had a cutoff valve to cut the water off in the wintertime. And that valve is gonna be in the next building attached to those, well, they're not attached, across the breezeway where they keep all the chemicals. So that's Yeah, it's those-
Sorry, in the last picture, over on the left.
Yeah, so those two buildings, one is the restroom and the other is the chemical where they keep all the buildings and stuff. The other thing that came up is we do not have accurate drawings or any kind of mechanicals on the splash. The, the pool designer, he just put a splash pad in there and that there's all kinds of things. So we discussed the issue of, we didn't want to waste water just to run off. Apparently there's some code, you have to be very careful, but you can't return water into the pool because kids have been playing in it and they worry about all stuff. But apparently, it's a piece of equipment where you recycle it with the pool water and get it out to when we, you know, run it out. So there, that's, has to be looked at. And that's what they're investigating now was the splash pad and all of that. And then they made a comment was that in the construction, they're going to have to kind of destroy or use part of our putting green. And so, and talking with is that we have to either fix the part that gets destroyed, or we can just as easily rebuild a new putting green. And I think that's what Johnny thinks we'll probably be doing is, is, is just redoing that. Because it's instead of trying to match up what we have or whatever. And I think the other thing was, was looking at keeping the ceiling heights, ability of that other big card room for use for other things. So, but everything is, the, where all the mechanicals, plumbing, all the, you know, all of that stuff was what the, the construction people were concerned about. And I think they feel very comfortable that we're gonna be close to what we want. And I, I think they got the amperage down. They lowered the amperage, which Johnny, you know, so it'll, so they have to get, we have to get numbers, Johnny has to get numbers from PEC.
That's right.
In order for us to understand what is, what they're gonna charge us. So that's, I think that's about what we discussed at the is that.
Yep, so-
Bottom minus, construction drawing, bid sets will be ready by the second week of June?
Yes. And then we would approve it at our meeting, which will be the third week of June. Yeah, so that's what the thought is, that they, they can get it to us so that
Well, it's not gonna go until the constitution allows.
Probably not at the earliest, yeah.
Yeah, at the earliest. Yes.
Yeah.
But, were they, were they Thirty days?
Thirty days.
Thirty days?
Yeah.
First of August.
It takes two August.
That's right.
So construction won't start until probably mid-September. Because they're gonna have to come in, get everything ready and prepared.
Well, it's on getting that temporary pro shop built. And that's gonna be another two months or
I thought we were starting that right away.
It's underway.
We've got two months, I mean, we're still
Yeah, you're right. So we should be able to get him-
We should be able to start construction by this.
Yeah.
Well, there's also-
Yeah.
If not, right.
Right.
Because you don't need construction lines to do that.
Well, I mean, there's one other thing that could come up. And what, that's what if the bids come in higher than what we anticipate, what, what Nash is currently expecting? Then what? We gotta go back and redo some, yeah, redo some, yeah.
We have to go in with the idea that the bids are gonna come in in your, that budget or maybe a lower budget.
Hopefully, yeah.
Right.
That's right. I'm just saying, there is, there is, there is some, there's some way for wheels to come off always.
Yep, and I guess last little bit, this, I featured this one because it shows both current and planned designs. The red is where structures or features currently lie that will have to be removed. And then behind that, you can see the design, the community center and then we'll go through again just the renderings. You can see updated, we had renderings like this. There's now a squareish and a splash pad over there. Here it is from-
Can you go back to that drawing? Does everybody
Absolutely.
here know where everything is? I mean, you see the pool? We know that the restaurant is over there on the right. Is that correct? Where you have that entrance?
That's right, close to the pool though, on the, on the pool side of the entrance.
On the pool side, the restaurant, that?
Yeah. On the, on the left of the main building is, is the restaurant and on the right is the-
If you see the, the wa, the covered walkway? You see how there's this kind of a half circle- If you see the, the wa, the covered walkway, you see how there's this kind of a half circle drive?
Right in the, drive.
Then.
Do we have a, yeah, that would be, I'll let you go.
Oh, okay. All right, okay. Let me see if I could, oh, I know, okay.
It reflects, so.
All right, I'm trying to keep it out of your eyes. Okay. This is the drive that the people can come in, they drop them off. This is the covered walkway into the lobby area. Over here is the bar, the restaurant, and then over here is the car, flex room, and that's the pro shop.
Okay, good.
And I did confirm that the side of the pro shop in this part has a covering. So if we were to put, has chairs out there for people to sit under to look at, out at the golf course, we, it'll be covered.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I don't know, it might be.
All right. Anything else, Will? Any questions for the council? All four of us.
You said update on the budget for new community center?
Oh, no, no update on the budget. I've kept these the same. But the, the budget, we should be within it, is, this was kind of the whole, this, this last presentation was about number one. And then number two is, since it's not really the community center, but more an ancillary part of it, is the cart barn is underway. We've extended the roof. Mr. Thompson has led that and his expertise is really invaluable. They've extended the roof, all in-house, got assistance from the county for pouring asphalt and placing it in. They should be putting footings in for the actual pro shop or the temporary pro shop building very soon. I know they're pouring some parts of that, but I don't think that part's completed. Then the actual building could get put up and it'll be pretty much finished. Yeah, they were pouring, putting in water last week for washing carts.
And that temporary pro shop, could you please reiterate when, when everything's finished, what will that be used for?
Used for a staging area for the carts. We'll be able to remove some merchandise from there. It'll also be flexible so that if we want to continue in doing one of the services that we will provide there while it's temporary, we can continue to do so. Right now, at a bare minimum, it'll be a place for an employee who is washing the carts to make sure all the paperwork's kept, make sure that any of the keys are there and just kind of have as a hub for specifically golf carts.
Yeah. Are, are we planning on building that building itself too, or is that, we're just doing the cart barn? The building with the restrooms and the, and the, where the pro shop does the transactions?
Mm-hmm. I think that there might be some, some assets that we need to outsource, but we're going to get the majority of it done in-house. That's what my discussions with Johnny have led me to believe.
Yeah, good. Okay. Any other questions? Carolyn, Barbara, Mike, Bruce? Okay, let's move on to discussion item and action item C. The codification project that's been on here for a while.
Yep, and so this is the same as last month. There's an action item which would authorize me to go ahead and enter this agreement, which would be an initial term of eleven thousand three hundred fifteen dollars in annual reoccurring service with five percent annual uplift. The annual fee would be two thousand four hundred ninety-five thousand, or, excuse me, two thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars.
Yeah, I think all, last month we went through this whole process, we didn't have this, the, the word action on the agendas. Just postponed it to this month. So all we're going to do is take the action now. And so if anyone would like to, Carolyn, propose a motion.
I move we authorize city manager DeRose to enter a contract with Munich Code slash Civic Plus for the City of Meadow Lake's codification program for the working costs listed in the May fifth, twenty twenty-five memo memorandum to council.
Well stated. Barbara's second. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, item D under old business, Will, it's going to be authorized transfer of funds from the general fund to the utility fund for the purpose of a street sweeper not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Where are we on that one? I saw it out.
Yep, we, we went ahead and got that street sweeper. The machine itself costs forty thousand dollars. The trip to San Scott Bridges, who knows a lot about this machinery, was one thousand eight hundred fifty-three dollars and shipping to Meadow Lake, four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So grand total was forty-six thousand one hundred and six dollars. With the remaining three thousand nine hundred, we're going to make any small repairs, probably get tires on it, but it'll still be under fifty grand.
Did they bring it in on a trailer or what?
Yes, they brought it on a trailer. It was a, a little circus act of its own, yeah. Uh, over with their equipment by the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay. Carolyn?
I move authorize the transfer of funds from the general fund to the utility fund for the purchase of a street sweeper not to exceed fifty.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you. We got that one passed unanimously. New business, we got item A knocked out. We've sworn in the new members except Garrett and we'll swear him in at a future time. Item B is the appointment of John Travis to, to the PFC. Any discussion or of John Travis and his willingness to serve and so forth?
He was.
He's been on PFC, yes. He knows, he knows the routine.
I move we adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven, appointing John.
Zero seven.
Oh, zero seven, sorry, can't read my own writing. Twenty twenty-five dash zero seven, John, appointing John Travis to fill place two vacancy in the Meadow Lake public facility corporation for the term expiring October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, okay. And is your second? Second, Barbara, again? All in favor? You guys over here are going to have to be fast enough to get to somebody before Barbara. Okay. Okay, item C is Department of Mike Clark, the building committee. Same routine, let's go with it.
I move we adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh six, confirming the Meadow, I mean, confirming the Meadow Lake city manager's appointment of Mike Clark to the Meadow Lake's building committee for the term expiring on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Barbara, you're slowing down. All in favor? Oh, thank you. Let's carry unanimously again. Okay, there's another item here. I guess we're going to kind of get, budget's starting to appear on the horizon and it's a big, long process, takes several months, ends about September. So let's talk about, maybe we'll get, get in at some of the timing for us doing during the, to get it all completed.
Sure, I would like to get a time next month for us to have our first budget workshop together, much in the same style that Johnny Thompson does. Our goal will be coming with some projections for next year based off what we're seeing right now, with feedback from department heads, some items or, you know, requests. Bring that to the city council, hear what you guys have to say, get your requests and thoughts on what the budget should include, and then take that into our next meeting where it'll be finalized. And then we will go ahead and pass the final budget workshop in probably August. It wouldn't even be a budget workshop, it'd just be at a city council meeting. So I'm envisioning a minimum of two meetings. Hopefully the first one will be right around our next city council meeting. So if we could do that beforehand, that'd make it really easy for everybody. Or if it needs to be another day to, to meet, that's fine too.
Yeah, like we discussed this afternoon, I think there's that one slideshow that we have as a workshop that basically introduces us to the process and I think with two new members and actually some of us older members that forget things. It's nice, it's nice. I learn something new every time I see it. So let's get that one scheduled for early June if we could. Is that, was that, how, how are everyone's calendars?
Oh, I guess you would, council and staff workshop for planning goals and priorities. So that doesn't have anything to do with numbers, right? It's just, is that the idea for that workshop?
Yes, there would be a little, we'd, we'd want to know where we're standing, some, some basic projections for next year, figure out, you know, is a piece of expensive equipment realistic or not while we're having that discussion? But it wouldn't be primarily focused on the numbers, no. We, we won't really have finalized numbers till later anyways, but it'll be there just so we know what the weather is or the climate for our purchasing. And then mainly we'll focus on, this is what we'd like to see for our departments.
And you'll have by the first, first workshop where we actually look at numbers, you'll have all the inputs from the heads that provide kind of capital improvements, there are capital items that they need, equipment.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Well.
And then part two would be taking a focus on specific parts of the budget. And Carolyn, that's kind of your, you want me to talk about that or?
Uh, yeah. What I had thought, because with so many, some of us new and that it would be helpful if each council member got involved with one specific part of the budget, you know, the general fund, utility fund, recreation fund, so that, you know, it's, it's going to be difficult, it'd be difficult for us to truly understand all those. It up and, you know, because, and look at the parts of the budget, the administrative part of it, the, how the utility funds, how the utility works, what comprises the recreation, what do we look as forecasts on that, that that would be helpful. And then that council member would be able to give the other council members more information in depth of that. So that's kind of what I had talked to Will would be a good, so whatever area you're interested in. I've, I've been working on the golf part of it, trying to understand the numbers and what our costs are, what our projections are. And so that, that's, I mean, that's what I thought. So whoever might be interested in some of the different funds to truly understand those numbers. That was just an idea I had.
It might be.
Hmm?
How many funds?
Well, there's, there's the utility, recreation.
And the IADAS, the.
Oh, yes, and the capital, yes, right, right. The debt service stuff.
Now, that's, that's pretty much straightforward. We know how much we're going to pay each year and we know how much we're bringing in from the adware and taxes. So that's not a.
So it's kind of like, you know, I know that.
It's the other three. I just wonder how, I mean, just thinking out loud without any prejudice one way or the other, but a lot of what we need to put in on the expenses or what we can allow on expenses has to do with how much revenue. So we need to get that, that revenue projection before we can kind of zero in on the expenses too and kind of get input from the council on what close session, on what kind of raises we give and so forth to, to figure out the, the amount of, you know, amount of available funds for personnel.
Do we think that our revenue will go down because of the construction? For, let's say the golf course?
There could be an impact to the recreation fund.
Oh, yeah, the recreation fund, yeah, could be.
We're going to do our best to mitigate that, but that probably if there's.
Yeah, because I think one of the things we're looking at that is, is how much revenue they're generating. Are there sources of revenue that they're missing out on? And that's also because they'll be in a smaller pro shop, the amount of merchandise they'll be able to sell. And so we have to look at what those projections are versus what they've been in the past. And, and, yeah, so that, our revenue, we know that's going to be, and that's going to be some, that's the one fund I think that's going to have the most change, probably.
Yeah.
Because the utility fund is pretty much what it is.
And your adware and taxes go into each fund? Because, you know, they raise, God, darn it, they praise, they praise value, everybody out here.
They primarily go into the general fund. A small proportion of what we generate goes into the debt service as well.
The, the, the INS goes entirely to the debt service. The, the, the INS, that's the, the interest and sinking fund. The, the taxes are divided into two, when you pay the adware and taxes, there are two, two buckets you pay. One's the INS, one's the MNO, maintenance and operations. So what we're, what we see is the INS is going to, that's kind of by itself with, with the debt service fund. So then the other, the other one goes to, let's see, it goes to mostly general fund. And then some, I guess some goes to, but mostly the, isn't the utility pretty much self-sustaining? I don't know that it needs a lot, if any, any of the adware and taxes. So most of it's general fund.
But we'll get from Scott then the operations for the utility fund of any new purchases we would need or maintenance and that type of thing.
And I remember also the old, old system, we did, did allocate some of the, some of the utility into the, to the debt service fund. I don't remember why we did it, but Johnny liked to do it that way.
Well, I think, isn't he, you, you know, some of the utilities that we're doing with the building of this project, they're letting the utility, it comes out of that utility fund?
Uh, yeah, some aspects of it would be more emergency response oriented, public safety. So anything for those purposes would not be within the constraints of having to be paid for with that bond. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, like a generator so that the community center can be an emergency staging area, that, that can come out of a different fund. Doesn't have just from this bond issue or past bond issue.
I think we're, I think we're kind of in the weeds right now and probably want to get a little bit of input from Will once, once you dig into it a little bit further, maybe a few weeks from now and get us together. But we need to, we need to just schedule the meeting for the first kind of general information workshop to.
And that would be the one prior to June seventeenth with our.
I think it should be, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it doesn't, I guess it's preferably on a Tuesday because that's where we seem to meet, maybe the tenth? You don't have a calendar? Okay. Well, we'll, we'll poll everyone and see if the tenth is okay with, with everyone. And then if that's not, you work the scheduling then.
Yep, we'll figure that out.
All right. Okay, mayoral announcement. I, I just got to say on community interest items, we did have on Saturday, we had the memorial here in the city hall room for Don Wheeler, a former city council member. Very nice. His family was all here and they gave some good testimonials, found out about Don and how kind he was and how family-minded he was. So I thought it was a very good thing and I think it's fitting that, that he was honored here and I appreciate the city for allowing the, the Wheeler fam, family to, to have, have use of this for remembering their dad and granddad and uncle and so forth. So there was that. Also, I'd like to remind everyone of the barbecue and Memorial Day get-together for the POA on November twenty-sixth. That's this, I think it's Monday? Yeah, this coming Monday. So that'll, that'll start at kickoff at five thirty.
I think they'd like people to RSVP if they could.
Yeah. And there's, where is it, where is it, what time?
Tomorrow.